Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 11th, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll start out this morning with committee meetings, but before we get started, I'd like to ask King to address our group here about a recent press release.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know we've got a lot of our friends from Shreveport here today, but more importantly, we were anticipating probably the misunderstanding of the BRAF report on the Health District, and we had three of our members, our Provost and our Chancellor and Executive Director of Pennington there yesterday, to make clear what this actually is, and it is not, quote as the papers say, a new medical school. The type of financial structure we're in right now, beginning a new medical school is not the intent of what the discussion with LSU has been all about. I'd like Chancellor O'Leary to start, and then I'll ask Will to chime in, and then Rick on what we're actually doing as part of this Health District.
Thank you, Dr. Alexander. For the last two years, the Baton Rouge Area Foundation has had discussions with consultants and a large number of interested individuals in Baton Rouge to look at the development of what is termed the Baton Rouge Bio District. Part of that discussion looked at streets and transportation around the area between Children's Hospital, the Ochsner Clinic, the Baton Rouge Area, Baton Rouge General, and looking at how we might work together with Pennington and our other associated entities. The consulting group came up with the concept of, they see the advantage of a combined LSU Health Science Center New Orleans and A&amp;M campus integrated program in medical education. Now, I recognize that since 1950, we have had graduate medical education going on here, initially at the Earl K. Long Hospital. Our residents have been there for 60 years. About two years ago, we received approval from the LCME, the Liaison Committee on Medical Education, to actually have a formerly designated branch campus here in Baton Rouge, primarily because of the large amount of experience that we're getting for our students and residents with the relationship with Our Lady of the Lake particularly. They reviewed us, they gave us approval of that, and so we now have some of our students who have been based in New Orleans doing their last two years, their clinical rotations, entirely in Baton Rouge. So we do have the branch campus. As you know, as part of the Our Lady of the Lake agreement with LSU, they also built a medical education building for LSU, so we have possession of that building near the lake campus. And these discussions have been going on for two years, we felt that it would be certainly beneficial for Pennington, for the LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans, and for the A&amp;M campus to look at doing joint programs together. As a matter of fact, Dean Kubick and I had discussions earlier this year about the development of combined MD/PhD program in biomedical engineering, and talked about this, but he's already accepted the first class in this. We've already moved forward with the development of these programs. This consulting group has taken that, and it was announced yesterday that there is a recommendation that Baton Rouge Area develop a regional campus for our four-year Baton Rouge program in conjunction and collaboration with Health Science Center in New Orleans. We're certainly willing to do that. I think we can offer more combined programs here, MDJD, there don't necessarily need more lawyers, but it might be an MDJD, it might be good, but an MDNBA, an MD in biomedical sciences, too. This is what was proposed yesterday. John Spain, the Executive Vice President of the Baton Rouge Area Foundation, gave the presentation, very clearly stated that they were recommending a regional branch of the LSU Health Science Center School in New Orleans to develop a four-year program here. It was not in any way intended to be, although it was mischaracterized by the press, as a free standing standalone medical school. The other thing that's been made very clear throughout all of these discussions for the last two years has been that if Baton Rouge is interested in having another four-year campus here, we would be supportive as long as it was understood that we would not do this with state general funds, as part to support the two medical schools that we have now, and I could not imagine trying to have state general funds support a third, so that's not, this would be, they would have to raise money for this independently. But if it's done in conjunction with Pennington and the Health Science Center in New Orleans, the price tag for doing this drops down to a tenth of what it would be at a free standing unit.
Thank you, Chancellor. And Will, the creation of the Diabetes and Obesity Centers going forward, with or really without the feasibility study that they're putting in place?
Correct. Actually, this is a center that basically is going to address integrating clinical care and is going to offer patients access to research opportunities, and this is something that's had consensus of all the institutions, the healthcare facilities in the city, it will involve LSU, it will involve the Healthcare Center in New Orleans, it will involve Pennington, and basically, this is something that I think everyone has gotten behind, and so the Diabetes Obesity Center is something that we need, and I think it's going to be something that all the hospitals support, and I think it will support clinical care, education, wellness, and research, so we have general agreement on moving ahead with the Diabetes Obesity Center, and LSU will be very involved in that.
Okay, thank you. Will and Rick, just from the flagship campus perspective, we've got a program that's already moving in this direction currently.
That's correct. As Dr. O'Leary indicated, there's already a joint degree program in biological engineering with the Health Sciences Center. We do have a desire among our faculty to develop new degree programs that leverage both our main campus and the expertise that we have in the medical schools, and this conversation's been going on for quite some time, and so we're quite supportive of Dr. O'Leary's initiative to bring some medical education initiative in a branch campus here to enhance that collaboration for our faculty's research and educational desires.
So, this is, I just want to make sure the press understands, this is a branch of our New Orleans Health Science Center, and it just expands some of the current programming that we're doing already right here in Baton Rouge. So I just want to make sure that, because there's a lot of people around the state that did not read that this morning, and hopefully, if you could help us, help them read it tomorrow morning the way that we see it and the way that we participate in it, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, President Alexander. I'd also like to point out that our students in Shreveport would also be involved, or invited to participate in this opportunity down here, too.
Absolutely.
So, well, let's see. With that being said, I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being livestreamed, so be aware of that, and also, you'll notice a number of members up here look like they're doing their, they're working on their computer, and it might appear that they're, they're doing work back home. They're not actually doing that. We are testing, piloting a new program where our meeting documents can be accessed via computer, so, and if you folks have any problems finding the data, slow us down a little bit if you can't find your documents, so let us know. So they're not doing their work from, for home. Okay, moving to public comments, we have three individuals who are registered for public comment today. All three Shreveport folks are welcome, glad to see y'all here today, Carter Rogers, Dr. Philip Roseman, and Scott Martinez. I want to remind everybody that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and Kay will be keeping track of that time for us, so we'd like to invite Carter Rogers to get us started this morning.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be able to come and speak to you all today, President King and members of the Board of Supervisors. I am here on behalf of the Shreveport Bossier Business Alliance for Higher Education, and I'm here to thank you for the work that you've done in the Shreveport area. The Doctorate of Education Leadership that was awarded to LSU Shreveport was a real boost, and we see that as a way to keep our quality educators in the community in Northwest Louisiana where they can continue their education while they're continuing their jobs teaching our children, so we appreciate that very much. We also appreciate the extra money that you found for the medical school and the last budget, and all of the words that you said today and that we have heard before, that you're behind our medical school, and it's going to stay there, and it's just going to get better, and that's what we are looking for. The school was first suggested to be built in 1950. It took until 1962 to have, '67 to have the first class. All that time was spent in politics and economics, but then we finally opened the school, the school actually started at the VA Hospital before they had a campus for it, and finally, they built the first school building in 1975. So it took us 25 years and the idea to get it done, and we've progressed since then, and all we want to do is make it get better, and we appreciate y'all's help in doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Carter, appreciate it. Next is Dr. Philip Roseman, who is the incoming Board Chairman of the Shreveport Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Philip.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm going to speak as, basically, as a recent president of the Shreveport Medical Society, as incoming chairman of the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, and maybe most importantly, as a graduate of LSU Shreveport and the LSU Medical School in Shreveport. I'm here to speak on the agenda item of the LSU BRAF CEA in context. I think it's safe to say it's been a very complicated and contentious issue along, that there's been much said, maybe too much said, on the issue, that much has been said that is involved into the creation of multiple conspiracy theories, so I'm not going to add to all of that today. I won't talk long, I'm here to just share one thought, and that thought is that the first thing always should be the first thing, and in the instance of the LSU BRAF CEA, it's our contention that the first thing is the future and the mission of the Medical and Allied Health School in Shreveport. As a physician in Shreveport Bossier and as a leader of the Shreveport Medical Society, we're proud of the role of physicians, the generation before us, who led the effort to bring the medical school to our community. They not only advocated for the school, they were the volunteer teachers for many years before it had a full-time faculty. They knew what the medical school would do to improve healthcare in our community and state, and they were right. That context set the stage for the kind of collaborative relationships that exist to this very day between the private practice physicians in our community and the academic physicians at the school. From the perspective of my role as chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, I can tell you there's only been a couple of things in our community over the last 50 years that our whole community has gotten behind, and I can count them on less than one hand, I-49 and this medical school. The biggest economic drivers in Shreveport Bossier are Barksdale Air Force Base, the Willis Night Health System, and the LSU Medical School, and so, we're, this is a very, very, very important part of our community. We know the positive impact of the school on healthcare and on economy and the attraction of businesses to our community, our quality of life, and diversity, even the diversity of our culture is dependent on our school, so I'm here to thank this board, really. Your commitment to the medical school and the Allied Health School in Shreveport has been phenomenal. I thank you not just for thinking about helping survive in tough times, but to move the status quo to the idea of expanding, increasing slots in our medical school classes. As a physician, I hope you'll continue to think big about workforce development and healthcare. As a physician, I hope you continue to think big about workforce development and healthcare. Every day, I'm a part of that. And I can tell you that beyond the medical school, we could, if you double the graduates of Allied Health School, every single one of them would be able to get a good-paying job. I know the economic development people like Scott, who's going to talk after me, don't look at these jobs as I do. They look at them as two-star jobs, I look at them as five-star jobs. To the people that have them, they are five-star jobs. They're good jobs, they're safe jobs, they're secure jobs, and they're well-paying jobs. So thank you for everything that you do from here on out in developing the workforce and healthcare. I'll close by saying that I heard Dr. Alexander say recently that the boundaries of LSU are the boundaries of this state. You don't know what that meant to me, okay? I am so thankful to have this board and your president have expanded your concern and leadership beyond LSU to all of the citizens of this state. That is so commendable. So as you make decisions about LSU, BRF, the CEA, my only request is that you consider your decision against the thought. The first thing should always be the first thing. And in this issue, the first thing is the future of the medical school and Allied Health School in our community. Do what's best for the Medical and Allied Health School, you'll be doing what's best for our state and community. Thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. Next is Mr. Scott Martinez. Scott is the president of North Louisiana Economic Partnership, and he is from Shreveport also.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to address this esteemed group this morning. I'm Scott Martinez, president of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership. We're a 14 parish regional economic development organization with offices in Shreveport and Monroe. So we do cover most of North Louisiana, most of the top of Louisiana. First of all, first off, I want to thank President Alexander for coming to Shreveport quite often, showing his interest not only in the medical school in Shreveport and the Health Science Center, but also to LSU Shreveport. But I'm here today to speak particularly about LSU Health Science Center Shreveport. I moved to North Louisiana three years ago from the Austin, Texas area. When I first moved to Round Rock, Texas in, in 2003, the big issue when I went to down into Austin for a meeting was how do we get a medical school in central Texas? As you're aware, this became a reality in that market, and they recognized the importance of having a vibrant medical school in that region. Okay, fast forward to three years ago. I moved to North Louisiana. One of the first meetings I went to, there was concern about the continued vitality of our medical school in Shreveport. So it is not only a quality of life, an educational issue, but it is an economic development issue. Just as those meetings in Austin took place 15 years ago, that became the genesis of the medical school there, we're committed in North Louisiana to make sure that we maintain, sustain, and grow, and make the best medical center we can have in Shreveport. And rest assured, you've got the support of the community in Shreveport and in North Louisiana, because it does extend all the way across North Louisiana and the state of Louisiana. If you look just in terms of economic impact, that Health Science Center in Shreveport has over $521 million direct economic impact, and there are over 4,200 jobs generated by that medical school. So it is an economic development proposition. If you look at our employment sectors in the 14 parishes we serve, 65,000 people are employed in the healthcare sector, and that's projected to raise, to rise by another 10,000 over the next decade. So having LSU Health Science Center as a vibrant fabric of North Louisiana and the state of Louisiana is an important proposition for economic development in North Louisiana. And I encourage you, as you begin to search for a new leader to replace my friend Bob Barish, that you look to groups like ours to help support the efforts, because we stand ready to assist in any way possible. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here, and have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Scott, and thanks to all three of you. And I assure you, from being, working on this board for the last five years or so, this board is committed to, to our medical school in Shreveport, and they've exhibited that every time there, there's been an issue there. So they are very fully supportive. We've got a lot of potential. King, his first trip up there, he noticed that, and there, there's no doubt that, that we're going to continue climbing. So, so thanks, thanks for y'all's support. Thank you for coming down here to Baton Rouge to express that support. Next on the agenda is committee meetings. We're going to start with the Academic and Student Affairs Achievement and Distinction Committee. Mr. Jack Lawton, vice chairman, will handle this discussion in the absence of James Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore? Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Shadlang?
Here.
Mr. Plessis?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Ms. Sanchez?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Gil Reeve will give a committee report.
Thank you. This semester, we have been providing a series of presentations to the board to provide information about academic affairs from different perspectives. We've talked about collaborative degree programs across the various campuses of the, of LSU, and we also recently talked about the collaborative research efforts with a particular focus on the Pennington Biomedical Research Center. Today, we're going to draw our attention to reports and metrics that are used to improve institutional performance. And this is an overview of these different types of metrics that we deal with on a regular basis, and how those are used in different reporting systems to describe and improve the institutional efficiencies and effectiveness of, of our multi-campus. Let me mention that you have a hard copy of this, I believe, in your folders and your materials if you want to follow along, and certainly feel free to ask questions as we go through this. I think it's important to understand that when we talk about reporting systems, there's a large number of them, and in an attempt to try to organize those, I looked at it from a, maybe a geographical perspective, that we, we provide reports that operate and exist at the national level, regionally, state, and then also down to the individual campuses. And at each of these, there are different kinds of reports that are submitted, and they represent and serve different purposes. I'm going to go through these briefly. Let me tell you that this is a selection of these reports and is by no means a full list of them, but it will give you an overview of how these reports are used and the data that is presented. At a national level, we have what we call the iPads Report. This is an integrated post-secondary education data system. It's a comprehensive database. It provides a variety of information for the institutions in terms of enrollment, retention, graduation, finances, faculty characteristics, and so forth. Every institution provides its own iPads Report on an annual basis, and the data is available for those who want to dig into it and do analyses as a subsequent use of the, of the iPads Report. More recently, we've had the College Portrait developed. This was around 2008 to 2010, and it's a voluntary system of accountability. And the idea here was that there needed to be available to the public a consistent presentation of university data. The story is, and I'm not going to say it's the, the whole truth, but when Margaret Spelling was the secretary of the Department of Education, she got frustrated in finding university information in a consistent format. So she created the Spelling Commission, which fortunately was short-lived, and that's my opinion, but I'll discuss that with anyone that wants to talk about it. But in place of that, as the Bush administration moved out and the Obama admissions, administration came in, there was a quiet period, and our professional organizations stepped up and decided to take the leadership in providing consistent data about the different institutions, and in a format that if you went to different campus websites, you could find the same information essentially presented in the same way. So it makes it easier to judge and make selection for parents and students looking for a, a future college or university to attend. This, the information in this includes things like graduation rates, includes costs, measures of student engagement, and other data that is pulled together and presented in the College Portrait. The most recent metrics that are, and reports that have come out is called the, and this is, I think in September of 2015, it was presented from the Department of Education, and it's the College Scorecard. And it serves a similar purpose, but it has a different data set. And I should mention that President Alexander was very much involved at the federal level in working with others in development of the College Scorecard. It provides a comparison. You go in, you can identify a region, a major area of study, you can identify a type or size of university you want to attend, and then it will produce in a single sheet, a number of campuses that fit those characteristics, and allow you to look across those campuses on measures such as the cost of attending, the completion rates, and a new variable, at least as far as I'm concerned, it's new, it's post-graduation income. And that's the average income of the students in that institution years after graduation. So these are national-level reports. They overlap in the data that they present, but they also are different in their utility and their accessibility and the information that might be provided.
Gil, I'd be remiss in pointing out that private education in America follows on every step of the way, police accountability measures, and we're our biggest adversaries.
Thank you. And that's insightful. Yes, sir.
A question on the voluntary stuff, obviously you're not reporting it to the federal government. Is there anybody that ever looks into it, checks up on that, or can you fix the numbers? Nobody cares. So...
The data is, all of the data is really available through multiple sources. So if you talk about graduation rates, you can go to iPads, you can go to the College Portrait, and you can go to the College Scorecard, and the data needs to be consistently.
Grad rates, all use of a five-year, six-year, they use the same thing?
There are some differences, and you always have the, Bob Coon used to say that you had to read the footnotes, and the definitions are very specific, and before you start making comparisons across different reports, you need to make sure the calculations are consistent.
But there's no penalties for stealing?
Well, you know, President Alexander...
When iPads was first developed in the early 90s, a bunch of institutions said, "We're not going to do it. We like federal money, but we're not going to do it." So then they assessed a $10,000 fine on every false data that's submitted. And iPads is very comprehensive, so... Really. So the College Portrait was developed to pull out what the average consumer can use, and then the College Scorecard is sort of the third leg of that, which even added additional information, like earnings, indebtedness, default rates that were added subsequently in the, in the last decade to... A user-friendly module that anybody and everybody could use, and we're encouraging college counselors throughout the country to use this to determine what's good and what's bad.
Can I ask on, on the debt and such, and the earnings, is that just done on grads, not those that drop out at two or three, knowing what their debt or income might be?
That, that is just done on grads, how many graduates, what amount of debt you graduate with, but also after seven years, it is determined that they have to supply data. And actually, it's tracked by the federal government, the Treasury, that whether or not your graduates in seven years are, are paying back their federal loans or not, which is another good indication. You, you can't, earnings, whether they're earning anything, number one. Number two is whether they're going on, going into default on their student federal loans means they probably didn't get the job they thought they were going to get.
Is any of these look at, do any of these look at the idea of the amount of federal and public dollars that are given to universities on a per diploma basis? Because we invest in high... ...the grads, is what it's costing per diploma versus per student?
The, there are, there's another data source, the Education Trust, where you can calculate what does it cost an institution to produce a single graduate, which also factors in the students they may have lost. So if a student has a, take, well, I'm not going to name an institution, but I want to. But an institution has 11% graduation rate, if you factor into the cost of the 89% that didn't finish, they can tell you that they may have low cost for those 11%, but it's astronomical when you factor in the cost that it took them to, to, to get 89% of them to flunk out, or leave, or so. And those cost range, probably, for us, it probably costs us, I'm roughly estimating about $78,000 to produce a graduate. Other institutions, it costs $250,000 to produce a graduate. A graduate, not just an enrolled student.
That's not a very good ROI for public dollars.
Well, and that's why it needs to be in the public, so the, our legislators at the federal and state level can make a better decision about where public money ought to be going.
Thank you. I should have mentioned that President Alexander is my co-presenter on this president. So, moving more narrowly to the regions, there, there are a couple of reports that are done, and the first one I'm going to mention is, is actually SACS, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. We think of it as a crediting organization, but really, it requires that we do and select a large number of metrics and present them as evidence of the work that we do and the efficiencies and effectivenesses of our institution. So in that sense, it is, and can be both a tool and a set of metrics that the institution uses, and they exist at a regional level. The other is the Southern Regional Education Board, which collects data for 16 different southern states and provides a database for those institutions in the region, and also has what's called a state data exchange, which provides a comparison of the data that allows some comparative analyses if someone wants to pursue it at that level. Going to go down to the state level and mention the Legrad Act. I believe you're all familiar with this. The Grad Act was started essentially six years ago. We're in our sixth year of this. It requires an annual reporting. Each institution has targeted performance scores and is judged against that on an annual basis. We prepare a report that presents the data compared to the targets for each score, things dealing with student success, like retention and graduation, transfer and articulation, workforce development, and efficiencies. And the state scores that, and if we pass the score, we earn certain resources and autonomies that allows the university to set tuition and, and other benefits for performing well. Yes, sir.
And who sets those targets for each university?
Fortunately, we do.
Each, each university?
Each university sets its own target. It's a negotiated target, though.
So they can lower the bar just to get over it?
We were shooting for 10% graduation rate, and the state wanted a little bit higher. But, you know, there was, in the first years, a few examples on some variables where institutions had set a, a reach beyond what they really should have anticipated being able to achieve, and ran into some trouble. That seems to have smoothed out, but in smoothing it out, we also lost some of the significance of having targets. And so we, we've done well on ours. We've passed every year. When you pass, you earn the resources and autonomies. But the state, once the agreements were signed, have also taken away resources at the same time they give us new resources, and it's created a balancing act without any real benefit to the, the bottom line for the institutions. There's been a lot of criticism of the Legrad Act. This is our sixth year. We will, every one of our institutions will provide a report this spring. It will be scored again. How it's actually used beyond that remains to be seen. That brings up the second entry. Yesterday, the Board of Regents approved a outcomes-based funding formula. This formula does, does two things. It takes the cost methodology that's been used previously in establishing budgets for state appropriations, and tied into that, many of the outcomes measures that are used in the Grad Act. So it's, it's pulling together both cost and performance measures. There's a lot of questions about it that will be resolved as the... There's a lot of questions about it that will be resolved as the Board of Regents presents this to the state legislature, and it moves to become a law. There's a refinement and clarification of what metrics are, how they're going to be defined, and, and who will be reporting those, and so forth. But it, it is an attempt by the state to, I think, replace the Grad Act, come up with something else, and I think at probably the system level, excuse me for saying that, but at the, this level for the, for all the institutions together, it represents a reasonable approach, but it may have problems as we try to translate it down to allocations within the multiple campuses of the university.
And what was the biggest problem or complaint in, with the Grad Act that they would propose a replacement?
Well, I think that the real realization was that when the agreements were passed around six years ago and everyone signed off on it, these were going to be new resources to the university. And as we became eligible for those resources, the state swapped out state appropriations, and so it produced no true benefit. President Alexander?
You could say there was a breach of the contract, and it came at us, not from us.
So I, I think that one of the things that we'll want to watch and be engaged with, and Dan Lozelle has been involved with this, and, and others from the university, but it's, it's how this is realized through state legislation, and that's going to be critical. It, it could be a good thing, or it could be another disappointment. The, at the university level, and that means the multiple campuses, we have a, an annual report that we provide called the LSU Metric Data Set. For each of the individual campuses, there is a collection of data that is presented. It includes, for most of our institutions, 42 primary variables organized across seven categories. It also has Metrics at a Glance page, which is a dashboard to let you look very quickly at these variables, and it shows whether the data has gone, the performance has gone up or down, or remained constant over time. I, I think that this data is the same data that you find in a lot of our other reports, and the issue with the LSU Metrics data is, to what extent do we use it? And I think that's a consideration in any time you write a report, and how it's going to be used.
So do we monitor all these reports, and is there, like, on that dashboard, as you said, collectively, we can look at how we rank on the national metrics, on the regional metrics, on the LSU metrics, and see how we're?
The dash, the dashboard actually, the dashboard actually shows the highest performance on that variable, the lowest performance historically on that variable, the current year's performance, and the percent change from the previous year. And the dashboard errors indicate the, so what you're glancing at is compared to last year on that variable for that institution, did it go up, down, or stay the same?
Against itself, or against its peers?
Against itself. It's its own data.
But the other, elsewhere, is there a comparison, when you look where we compete nationally or regionally?
On selected variables, when peer comparisons are available, it's in the report, and if you want to dig through and find that data, it's there. LSU, as you know, LSU A&amp;M has 13 peers, and they are, like, on research productivity or, or research expenditures, you'll find the rank and where we are in that group. And that's true on other measures as well. But not every measure is that data available, so it doesn't present it across every measure.
Question. Yeah, you may have addressed this, I'm sorry I was a little late. So how much of the workforce development needs are baked into, the state's workforce development needs are baked into what perhaps we might want to do with regards to tuition for a particular area of need? You know, one of the things that we've heard a lot about is we need more engineers in the state. LSU obviously has a tremendous engineering program. Does it make sense, as we look at this, to take that workforce development need and to make sure that we are doing everything we can to attract folks to the university in an area that the state has a need for, which is a high-wage area, which tends to probably, there's probably a lot of research that shows that it leads to perhaps even more alumni given and things in the future? Is there anything that's baked into, into this on workforce development need?
The Grad Act included measures related to that, but the, workforce and economic development factors and measures. One of the things I think you have to keep in mind, and this is going to come back up towards the end of this presentation, is that the data is there, and it's our responsibility to use it. And this is a good example of where we know what the state wants, and we know what we can do, look at the data and tell us where we are. And so it comes back to us to take the information that's there and actually make decisions based on it. And not, this is my position, not let the data make the decision for us. Okay? We use and interpret the data to, based on what we understand the context and the needs, the demands are. So I think the answer is, is partially yes, in that the data that can tell us those kinds of, and answer those kind of questions is there. We've got to draw on it and, and put it into that question.
So just ask a follow-up question to, to the president. So, you know, not so much a postgraduate degree, but an undergraduate degree in psychology and undergraduate degree in engineering, here, here, here to before, has basically been priced the same at the university, in terms of the number of hours that someone needs to graduate? There's no premium put on, on, on an engineering kind of situation versus a, a psychology? And I'm not making my own, I'm not making any, any observations because my wife has a master's degree in psychology, and, and I think that's the most important thing in the world. Because I just saw, I just saw that this meeting is being streamed live, live. So, you know, I mean, who needs engineers, right? I mean, we need psychologists more than anything. I love you, I love you, baby. So, so, but, but are we, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I was just reminded by my colleague, I'm sure she is watching this.
And, and she still wants a Christmas gift.
Right. She's like, you're, you're already proving to me that you can't win an election, so I don't need to be watching this. So, so anyway, hav, having said that, do, do, do we look at pricing a little differently, or can we look at, with regards to the Grad Act, pricing a little differently towards meeting the, the state's workforce development needs?
We cert, we can. I, I think that the, the way we address the needs is certainly the WISE Fund was set up specifically for that purpose. There just wasn't much money put in it, really. And the WISE Fund, and, and it's up to us, as, as administrators, also, to study where the student demand is, and to help students understand what those outcomes are really starting to, to show right now. And we've never had more income-based data. We've never had, and you factor that in with indebtedness ratios. Our students are actually figuring this out, and they're, they're flowing with 35% increase in STEM and engineering, which 10 years ago, we couldn't get students into STEM and engineering.
And that's because they have access to the data, so the market is driving them there just based on that?
The, the things that we've been working on to show, is this a good rate of return? Because most students are going to change majors two or three times. At, at the same time, most students only realize, when they kind of show up at a campus, they only, they only know about one, one-sixth or one-tenth of the fields that we have to study from. So we've got an obligation to them to make all this available to them, their parents as well, and let them make good legitimate choices on whether, and unfortunately, our, our public school teachers are at the bottom of most of those scales, but if they want to go and serve society, there's not a better job in the country. A more important job in the country is to be a kindergarten teacher. And so, so I think you weigh all these factors, and we need to give them as much information as possible. And I, I think, certainly, I, I, from Claire's perspective, look at, students have figured out law. And right now, the law market is so difficult that it's hard to getting back, hard getting the same classes each and every year, the number. We've gone from 200 to 175, because the data is available, and students, students are starting to figure it out, parents are starting to figure out, that you're going to get quite a bit of debt, and the job you thought you're going to have isn't there right now. Might be there in five years, might be there in 10 years. But the more that we give, make this data, data available to our students and parents, and the more we also react as administrators, if students are going into engineering and STEM, and we have an 82 to 1 petroleum engineering student-to-faculty ratio, we need to get some faculty in there. And we need to get more faculty in there. We're building the largest college of engineering in the country, square footage, and we've got to get faculty into those areas where student demand is up and where workforce demand is certainly up. And I think it's our responsibility to do that.
Right, so from a, our responsibility, is there a pricing mechanism that, that we need to look at that, that says that not every, we don't treat every degree the same, and there is some pricing mechanism that comes?
There's some.
Based on workforce development needs?
There's some, and it's based in the fee autonomies that we have, laboratory fees and other fees that, for higher-cost programs. But the danger of getting too far, the danger is you encourage students that might have more resources to go into fields of study that, that, that cost more, versus many students who haven't even begun to explore those fields because they, they don't have the resources and they're scared away from the cost.
Right. Well, again, as I, I think we explored, you know, one of the things is that, is a, as we kind of communicate with, with the folks in the Big Stone Building downtown, is, is a top scholarship for, for every degree worth the same amount. Do, does it, is it the best public policy for the state of Louisiana to say that, you know, we want to give more money for a top scholar who is applying in engineering versus someone who is going into something that the state needs less of? Not that a person, that the workforce development needs are saying is less valuable, not that we're making our own individual opinions, because, you know, one person may think nutrition is more important than engineering, and I respect that, a, a, as so be what their, what their wishes and their desires are, I get all that. But where, where the market is screaming out and saying, "We need more of this," should the state's public policy try to reward filling that gap? Because business is going to fill that gap either with Louisianians or folks from other areas, as they have to get those, those skillsets into the state. Should we not, by matter of public policy, be pushing it that way?
I would say the only public policy that we've really gone in that direction was the WISE Fund.
Right.
And we did get 100 to nothing vote in the Assembly. And we should have expanded WISE, and that's part of the argument, is how do you put a WISE on, on steroids? Because we left out healthcare, as Dr. Rosen pointed out. I argued for healthcare. May be, may be perceived as a two-star job, but they are beating our doors down.
Right.
You get physical therapists, audiologists. The, the state's not going to, the state's going to get older, the nation's getting older, and those jobs are going to be there, nurses, and they're going to be there for a lifetime. And they're some of the most mobile, and they can pick their own hours. So I think we need to be more expansive on how we see that, the workforce area, and certainly, WISE is a good first step in moving and factoring those considerations in, to get the business community involved and as a partner as we go forward in public higher education funding.
Thank you. I want to move then from the, the university into the individual campuses. There are a lot of reports that are done. I want to just highlight two of them in this case. One is a discipline-specific program accreditation. Our professional programs on our various campuses, such as business, engineering, education, architecture, law, medicine, all face accreditation for their individual disciplines. And this requires that you have evidence of what you do and how successful you are doing it, which creates another use of the metrics that we have available. One of the things that's happened, and I'm, I'm using this as an example of the importance of the right kind of data. 30 years ago, if you talked about accreditation of a professional program, you had to list the courses that were being taught or offered. And we had 30 hours of this, and we did 20 hours of this, and we got accredited. Accreditation has moved away from that at the discipline level, as it has also with the regional accreditation. And that is, now you've got to demonstrate that what the students are learning, and how well they're accomplishing the expected outcomes associated with, with student learning. And it's a very different approach and a different metric set in the institution. And accreditation, more and more is moving towards that as a principal feature in all of our disciplines. Another type of analysis, reporting, using data is the faculty annual evaluations. Faculty every year at every campus provide a report of how well they've done. They present that on their teaching, student evaluations of teaching. They present information on research and publications, service activities and so forth. So every faculty member builds his or her own data set, and they present that. And in fact, we use that at LSU A&amp;M. We, we start as that as a base data set. It's compiled into a department report, a college report, and it's advanced forward up to the university level. And it's just another perspective on the way in which the institution is being efficient and effective in its mission. And it's a different kind of data set, because it's not one that can easily be collected at the university level. We have to have faculty tell us what they've published, and what they've presented, and so forth. And so that's a very critical piece of the data, but it really relies on coming from the department and through the department to the colleges as it builds up. And so we, we have another kind of data, and it, it's faculty annual evaluations are used to help direct faculty towards future expectations of performance. It's used in tenure and promotion reviews, and it's also used in merit pay raises when or if that should ever happen.
And the deans and department chairs do all the evaluations?
It occurs to me, department chairs do an individual evaluation, and in a tenure and promotion case, a, a review and evaluation is done at the department, faculty chair, at the college, with usually a committee and the dean, and at the office of academic affairs, with a review by the provost and a presentation to the president.
And I'm assuming on the annual, how much, is the same instruments used, and how much training do the department chairs get with you doing evaluations?
They probably are trained by having been evaluated in previous years. We, one, one of the issues, I think, in, in a lot of what we do is, is, and now I'm talking not LSU per se, but across the country, is making sure that department chairs are well-prepared to be administrators and leaders of their departments. There are now national organizations which provide training for disciplines in their different areas, and we, and department chairs are encouraged to participate in those.
Are we using the same instrument we use for how long? Is this something, five, 10, 20, 30 years?
At the, at the department level, the format of the report is determined by the department or by the college, in some cases. And, and that's necessary in, in one extent, because the disciplines are different. What do you do in music and, and art and theater versus sciences, and what evidence do you present, is very different. But ultimately, it comes down to those evidence of productivity in terms of teaching, research, and service. Let me mention, though, talking about, I should have mentioned this previously, in terms of the discipline-specific accreditations, LSU is an example. LSU A&amp;M has 26 different programs or departments that are accredited, and in some cases, like with business and engineering, it actually covers the entire college. So one accreditation represents the entire college of engineering and its bachelor's degree programs, and same thing with business. So when I say 26, it can be an individual program in one department, or it can be all of the departments within the college, and that varies by discipline and the type of accreditation. So I've moved you from the broad view of the nation all the way down to individual campuses. As you look across these, you find some common data sets. We have the data presented on student characteristics and success, particularly numbers of freshmen, transfer students, retention and graduation rates, degree completers. We have the data about faculty and research productivity, both in terms of teaching loads, like semester credit hours per FTE, research expenditures per FTE, and so forth. And then finally, the revenue end of it, the income part. We look at tuition and fees and the cost of attendance associated with that, state appropriations and annual gifts. All of those data sets are out there, and different reports require that you pull them together and put them into different reports. The issue then becomes a consideration of how we use these, and what are the characteristics of good data. And I want to just briefly mention this, because it goes back to. And I want to just briefly mention this because it goes back to questions earlier about, well, who verifies the data or what does the data mean and so forth, and does everyone use the same data? When we talk about the data's being used, it's important to make sure that we have well-defined measures, that we understand what we're measuring. It's surprising when you deal with people, they'll start talking numbers and they don't really understand how that number is generated and what it represents. And that means that the data has to be valid and reliable, it's meaningful, it has to be related to the purpose for which you want to use it, it's got to be consistently measured over time. That is pretty useless as a one-time snapshot. It's got to have some sort of trend or comparative data to go with it. Internally, it's always good to track data over time, and we're expected to do that with accreditation reports such as a SACS compliance certificate. And it's got to be timely and manageable, if the data is such a data set that you can't really manage it and report it out in a reasonable way, then it's going to bog you down and you'll never use the data. I teach a lot of sports psychology classes, and we have a concept called paralysis by analysis. And that means that you come up with so much evaluation of what you're doing that you can't get anything done. So you've got to be selective and pick the appropriate information to present to make the correct decisions. The other part of this though is the process used, and this is critical. It's got to be ongoing. It can't be that one year we do it one way and next year we do it differently or we don't do it again for a number of years. There's got to be some sort of planned cycle associated with your planning and assessment activities. It's got to be based on predetermined goals and what you intend to do and stated outcomes that are worthwhile. You've got to report the progress that you make. What accomplishments did you make? What challenges did you have on a regular basis? Critical to this process is there's got to be feedback. If you write a report and send it into someone, someone's got to tell you what they think about it. And that's that feedback loop, and we often forget that. I've got your report, it's on the shelf, thank you very much. It's got to be, I've used this, here's what I want you to do next, the directions I want you to do. And we're looking for evidence of improvement over time. What I'm really leading to in this discussion is that we need data-based decision-making. All of these metrics should serve as a framework for making decisions, and we shouldn't let the data make the decisions for us. I'm going to quickly do one other little piece, and I wanted to talk about organizing these reports in kind of different ways. A lot of these reports are simply descriptive. They present information, you can look at it, you get a description of the unit of the institution that you're dealing with. Other reports are really evaluative. They in fact lead to judgments to be made and evaluations of how well you've done. If you take the reports that I've discussed so far, things like iPads, the college portrait, college scorecard, the LSU metrics are more descriptive. Now people may take that data and use it for their own judgments, but the data itself doesn't lead to any particular outcome. Where SACS compliance reports, the state data comparison for Southern Regional Education Board, the Grad Act even, discipline-specific accreditation, faculty evaluations, lead to judgments. They require judgment to be made in some way. And so not all reports are even. I've kind of put these in two categories. If I had a bigger screen, I would have put it on a continuum. Some data is entirely descriptive, others leads to more judgments, and then some are highly evaluative in nature. And so rather than just two boxes, you could spread these out and make relative statements of the extent to which each one is either descriptive or evaluative. That brings me, I know you're going to be excited to hear this, to my conclusion. And that is that although we've had an extensive discussion about metrics and reports that are used, it's not exhaustive. We, each university and LSU reports numerous ways, data in different purposes, and it is very extensive. Also, there are new tools coming available, and one of these has been implemented just recently, this semester, is academic analytics. This is used to assess faculty research productivity, it provides the administration and deans a way to look globally at the work that's done within the different units. Purpose is primarily to identify and improve research collaborations, to look for opportunities for growth and expansion, and it really should be thought of as a planning tool, and we're , of us...
This is quite significant because what it does is it gives us an opportunity to find out, we may have departments who think they're better than they are, and we have departments that don't think that they are as good as they are compared to the other departments around the country. And the only way we've had to measure that is the National Research Assessment Council puts together a PhD measurement system that's only available once every 10 years. And this actually gives us an opportunity to find out where we really do have star departments and how we can help fund those departments. And also what we need to do with some other departments that may perceive themselves as being much higher than they are, and to give them some help to regain status on where they used to be. So this is a comparative tool that allows deans to take a good look instead of just hearsay or reputational impact, which could be as old as 20, reputational stuff is, could be 25 years old to two.
I want to applaud that because, you know, just like we're talking about what we want, what you want done at the federal level on universities as far as outcome-based, what the state's doing based on outcome-based, you know, we ought to apply the same thing for our own schools and departments on outcome-based. How are we going to reward those that are producing, and when those indicators show that they're moving up based on previous, you know, how do we say great job other than great job? And if they're going down, you know, what's the other side of the coin?
We have one example of a dean not wanting to go in this direction, and then all of a sudden, they turned out much better than they even thought they were, and he loves it now. This is a great idea.
By the way, not everyone here is going to agree with this observation, but sometimes when the data goes down and you're really committed to that purpose, you need to give resources to it. In other words, you don't only award success, but you support needs as they're identified. And this can be used for that purpose too. As a closing comments then, I think the need exists to better manage the demands of reporting and presentation of the data. Reports need to serve well, define purposes. Duplication of reports and metrics should be eliminated or reduced so that the demand is not there to constantly produce another report. Planning and assessment processes need to be ongoing to ensure continuous improvement. And something that I haven't mentioned, and none of this data really addresses it, we have to come up with qualitative measures of performance, things that go beyond just numbers. And that's very hard to do, but we need to always keep that in mind to find other ways to look at performance. Thank you.
King, just as a follow-up, was the, did the WISE Fund anticipate giving your statements about kindergarten jobs? Did the WISE Fund indicate money in that profession?
That's, that's a great question, and that was one I lost the fight on because we can only produce so many engineers if we don't have the number of math and science teachers in middle school and high school. And I worry about the pipeline not being included at all. So the pipeline on building and getting students into those areas doesn't start when they walk into the presentation, starts, can start way before that. So when I say taking WISE and expanding it and blowing the doors off the parameters so that we get into the things that really matter, our argument fell short on the WISE Fund with regard to teachers that we know create that pipeline. No kindergarten teachers all the way through math and science teachers in high school.
Got you. Thank you.
And just before we wrap up with the academics committee, I know we've talked about how this data helps administrators and how it helps them make decisions, but I truly cannot emphasize enough from a student perspective how critically important this information is. Students are using this metric data to make very real decisions that affect their futures and ultimately the future of the state. So I just wanted to say a huge thank you. I know there's an incredible amount of work that goes into this process and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Any other questions, comments? Bobby, I think you have one.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, if I could, not being on the committee. Gil, I sat here very interested in seeing how you've developed these metrics for the various departments. And Dr. Alexander, as I heard this, I'm thinking about med schools. And now that we have turned the corner on hospital transitions, I would like for our healthcare committee to start looking at appropriate metrics for the medical schools. I'd like to see what high-performing medical schools are doing in this regard. We could hear from experts, we could work with our chancellors and Dr. O'Pelka. I think we could really develop something that could turn our med schools into another tier of excellence down the road. So I would like for us to begin that endeavor.
Certainly, we welcome that review because the more information is always better for all of us to make the right decisions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I conclude the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. And Gil, thank you for that great report. And I hope somehow you would incorporate this into the new website that LSU has that was introduced several months ago so students and parents can, can look at all of this data. I think it's critical to make it easy to find, readily available, easy to use.
Easy to use.
Absolutely. Okay, next we'll move into our property and facilities committee. Chairman Roth McAllister will lead this discussion.
Let's call the committee meeting to order. Okay, if you call the role, please.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Danos?
Here.
Mr. Plasis?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. McCrery?
Here.
Mr. Moore? You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we just have two items here. Start with number one, a request from the LSU Health New Orleans to enter into an agreement with LSU HCS affiliated organization for the construction and operation of digital outdoor advertising sign structures. Any?
Thank you. This document is a land lease with an affiliated not-for-profit who will then contract with the sign company to build and operate the digital outdoor advertising signs. And the Health Science Center has selected the LSU Healthcare Network to be this not-for-profit to do this, and they're a 501(c)(3) organization affiliated with LSU. And then they will go get competitive bids from sign companies to build and operate the signs. And the big signs, there are two, they're 14 feet by 48 feet. One is in front of the dental school along the interstate, the other is front of the dormitory building on, right on Claiborne Avenue. The two small signs are 10 feet by 4 feet, they're both along Tulane Avenue in front of the parking garage and in front of the Human Development Center. And the benefits to LSU are the marketing messages for the medical school and also the revenue for the healthcare network. And the terms of the lease are 30 years for $1,540 a year. These are little bitty small plots of ground. And as with all of our leases, the board maintains control and approval of the design and the construction and also the message content. And also the contract with the sign company would have to be approved by the board or by the president.
Let me ask you, have we explored the possibility of revenue sharing with the sign company? Would give a greater potential and as prices escalate over the 30 years, that 1,500 would continue to go up?
Oh, with the 1,500 is what the foundation is paying us for the land, then the healthcare network will then enter into a contract with the sign company, and they will have revenue sharing on the income from the advertising.
I got you.
And that'll be on a competitive basis.
Okay.
Who shares in the revenue?
The, our not-for-profit, which is the healthcare network, will contract with the sign company and share that revenue.
Good revenue producer for the not-for-profit, you know, for the health.
What is, the sign company manages what, just taking leases?
Build the structure, build the structure.
They design it, they build it, they get the permits, they handle all the advertising and the messaging that goes on it. That's their business, the sign companies do that.
They're the sales force, they're the...
Yeah.
It's digital, so you're going to have 20 different people marketing on it. Somebody manages that and somebody decides not to do it anymore and they take them, I'll put somebody on, they manage that process.
Well, the sign company would do all of that. They would handle all the management.
Ask Chancellor O'Yea.
Yeah, Chancellor O'Yea, you want to?
If you could have the slides up, I just have a very brief presentation demonstrated. What we're trying to do is monetize as much of our properties as we can in there, there's always a need for additional opportunities like that. And in discussing this with our faculty senate, we felt that if we could get additional revenue on this, we could dedicate at least part of that for needs of the faculty, as something to try and increase potential bonuses or rewards. So next slide, please. Just move to the next one, we'll move through this fairly quickly. This is a sort of what you would see, there would be a fixed portion of the board that would have LSU Health on there, and then the major part would then be a rotating situation. Next slide. This 30-year term, we would, in addition to having part of the regular rotation where we would advertise whatever we wanted to advertise, like our faculty practice, or if there was an amber alert that could be put up there as well, anything, congratulations to our graduating class, images for LSU inducted. Alexander, we put signage all around and marked our properties all around, but this could be an additional situation. Next slide. We do get, in addition to the free advertising, we have control of the other signs that go up there. I'm not particularly interested in advertising for Tulane Rocker. But it does give us control. We don't want to necessarily advertise for cigarettes or alcohol, although it's good for our business, but it's not what we're into. So we would have that, we would have that control. Next slide. We get 35% for sales, and this increases over time. Roth, exactly what you were asking about, it is tagged toward increasing growth. And altogether, next slide, you can see the value of it over the 30-year period, the overall actual revenue of 28 million and free advertising of the 16 for overall. And, next slide, I'll show you where it is. This is the Interstate 610 in New Orleans adjacent to City Park where our campus is for the dental school. Next slide. Again, looking at that, you see the arrow is where it would be right adjacent overlooking 610 so there's high visibility. Next slide. This is where we'd like to go with this, and this is what our faculty practice would arrange for us.
I applaud the entrepreneurial thinking here, love it, you know, and I think, like you said, it can be a long-term success. I would just say to you like this, this one, the slide you have here with the LSU Health sign is separate from, you know, I think that may be the best situation because the other one you had with the frame with the logo above whatever's on the sign, if somebody, as you said, I noticed there was a recent SC school with a corn dog up there in New Orleans on the sign. We don't want those kind of, you know, and again, unless you want to constantly be monitoring and having to censor and then get accused of censorship, and someone doesn't want to do that, the idea of using the panel on there along with the other advertisers, I think would be separate and apart. But that logo sitting atop whatever comes up on there is going to be a job for somebody to constantly, because it associates with us, and we don't want to be endorsing any particular product. So that's the only thing. This one here where you have the sign separate and apart as opposed to a frame, you know, I just...
That's a good point, Rob. And we will, obviously, before we bring this back to you for final approval, we will, we will look at those issues specifically, it's a very good point, thank you.
Because nobody called and you were King saying, "Why are you guys the one?" Whoa. But I think, I think it's a, it's a great move, and again, if it doesn't affect the site or the decor or the image of the university in any way, and these look like beautiful structures, so. All right, any other questions?
Roth, if I could just ask, Dr. O'Yea, do you plan to sprinkle in, if you will, positive PSAs about health messages?
Yes, it's part of our negotiation with the sign company. I'm assuming that they're going to have some times where they actually don't have every second covered by commercial signs that are... And what I'd like to do is reserve those signs for us to use for various public service announcements, advertisements of other things related to health, or for that matter, related to LSU education in general.
Yeah. And I would say to you, having, get requests for advertising space often, you know, have your guidelines set, and maybe it's LSU-related because otherwise, everybody and their brother's going to come ask you for that free space. So that's another job you'll have.
They will because the location of this is right.
Oh, yeah.
Every car on that interstate, it's right there, right there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion? Move, Hank, second to Scott.
Wait, I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
Have we, have we looked at the prohibitions that are in place now for some of the digital signs? I know the state, the city has some prohibitions, and I guess this would be along a state highway? There's still some there.
Yeah, we, we have looked at that, the... Yeah, we, we have looked at that, the, since this is state property, the state is sort of exempted from some of the restrictions on signage.
Right.
There are still restrictions that are set by the sign companies as well.
Right.
As an example, it has to be, um, 100 yards away from the other adjacent sign, next adjacent sign and other areas like that. The sign company will have the responsibility to get the approval from the city and to co, fund all costs for construction and maintenance.
Okay, moved by Mr. Danos, second by Mr. Ballard. Any questions? Any opposition? Hear none, the motion's approved. All right, request for LSU A to approve a lease agreement with the LSU A Foundation for the construction of the Icon Corner Pond and entrance signage.
Thank you. This is our standard lease to a foundation that will make improvements on our property, build it and then donate it back to us at the completion of the project. The LSU A Foundation will build this monumental sign and the landscaping all around it and its existing pond out there. It's at the corner of Highway 71 and Highway 3170 and the cost is approximately $450,000 and the design was developed during the recent master plan process and, uh, the board will retain the usual rights to approve the design and the construction.
Once the sign's completed, landscaping's done, then it's turned over to the university we maintain?
Right, yes.
All right, any questions?
Not on the committee, but question, and Chancellor Howard, this came up, I think, at the last foundation meeting, it was a risk management question. In, how do we cover that in, when, when the foundation is, not, not in this case, it's a, it's a sign, but if there's a construction project going on, how is the risk management in terms of insurance and all that handled?
Well, the foundation is required by the lease to maintain insurance.
Then when it's turned over to us, it becomes ours.
Right. That interim period, I was.
I hear a motion by Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir.
Second by Mr. Ball, or second by Mr. Plasis. All right, any other discussion? Any opposition? Hear none, the motion's approved. That concludes our committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman McAllister. Uh, next on the agenda is the Finance Infrastructure and Development Committee. Chairman Ronnie Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kay, would you call Roe, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Danos?
Here.
Mr. Rongel?
She's mine.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mr. McCrery?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, we have one agenda item, a request from LSU A&amp;M for the, uh, establishment of a restricted account in the LSU Information Technology Services for software recovery account. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, members of the board. Uh, LSU A&amp;M is requesting, uh, that, uh, as noted in the resolution, uh, that we, uh, restrict a current account that we have, that's set up for software purchases and software, uh, recovery. Currently, uh, at the, at the year end, uh, the, the unspent balance, which this past year was a little over $13,000, reverts back and can't be carried forward. Under the, the requested proposal, we're asking that, uh, that we, uh, the institution be allowed to restrict the account so that this balance can be carried over into future years to build up for the purchase of additional site licenses, uh, for teaching, research and learning software. What this allows us to do is, is one, to plan for those kinds of larger expenses down the road, but also then, uh, in any given year not have to, uh, essentially take, take that money, uh, out of the existing operating budget, but again, to, to, to be, be able to allow the institution to, to plan for those expenses, uh, and, uh, and, and purchase them when, when they're needed. Uh, so with that, I would be, uh, be happy to answer any questions and, and request your, uh, approval of this, uh, this resolution.
Anybody have any questions?
Chairman Anderson, I, I, not on the committee, but I do have a question.
I think we'll let you ask it.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I guess I look at the, the state budget and all the restricted funds we have and I want to be certain we don't get into a situation like that because I know this has come up on the board in, in recent times, other restricted and dedicated accounts. So we need to be very cautious going forward. I, at the same time, I understand, uh, if, if we don't set up this money so it can carry forward to the following year, there might be the, uh, uh, the motivation to spend all the money this year and you may not spend it wisely. So what I would, would ask in the future, before we look at these restricted funds, are setting up additional restricted funds that maybe we look at it on an annual basis, monies that are left over, uh, uh, in these different departments that, that the board act on carrying it forward, uh, just so we don't get in the situation like we are in the state of Louisiana.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Someone make a motion to move forward? Scott, uh, Jack seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chairman, that concludes the work of the committee.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Uh, we will have an audit committee meeting, it'll be after our, our regularly scheduled board meeting. So, uh, with that, we will adjourn, uh, for lunch and we will return at 1 o'clock. 1 o'clock, we'll see you back here. Thank you.